All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the City of Cloverdale City Council meeting. We'll call the meeting back to order at six o'clock. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, everybody. Get a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with Councilmember Bagby just entering in on Zoom.
Thank you. Report out on closed session.
Mayor, the council did have closed session today regarding existing litigation. No reportable action was taken.
Jose, any conflict of interest declarations from anyone? Seeing head shakes of no, moving on to agenda review. Any changes or deletions?
Mayor, members of council, there's no changes or deletions. I do want to note that there was some additional materials added to the agenda packet after it was published for item F5. This is in regards to the flag policy item on the consent calendar. An amended resolution was added to your packet, and that is available to the public as well as there was some additional correspondence that was received that's included in the packet as well. Likewise, under the new business item, there is a presentation for the dog park item as well as an updated presentation for the presentation on AB 2449. Those are all included in your packet. I just wanted to point that out, that those are additional materials that were made available after the agenda was published. Thank you.
Thank you, David. C, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. I'll start with my audience. Is there anyone in my audience that has any public comments on any items not on the agenda? Yes, sir. I'm going to ask you to step up to the podium, please. That item will come up in just a little while, and we will make sure you get your chance during that time. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, anyone in the audience?
There's one attendee that just joined. They are not raising their hand at this time.
Okay, and it looks like that attendee is actually here probably for a certain item. D, communications. Council may discuss at this time any written communications sent to council members since the last council meeting. Written communications to be discussed will be listed below if any.
No communications, Mayor, other than as noted for the agenda items.
And they are all listed under those agenda items in the...
Right.
Perfect, thank you. All right, moving on to presentations. Student liaison report.
Good evening, everyone. Today for my report, I have that Dylan Jones medaled at NTS, making him the first wrestler in CHS to be medaled there. Girls soccer won their last soccer game four to zero at Hillsburg on the eighth. Girls basketball lost their playoff game in Eureka last week. Boys basketball played in multiple playoff games but lost their game yesterday. There is a practice, there was a practice track meet today which started at four o'clock today. There will be a track fundraiser on next Friday at six at Houston Hudson Street Wineries in Hillsburg. And Jourgen Sehod was chosen for this year's delegate at Girl State. Mr. Eagle is on March 2nd at seven, and there's a daffodil giveaway around noon at CHS on March 3rd. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Anyone doesn't know what Mr. Eagle is, it's a male talent and beauty contest. And if you want to see something that's entertaining, you should go to the East Gym and watch that. It is quite the piece of work, and these kids do a lot. It's fun. Okay, moving on. F, consent calendar. Does anyone have any items that they would like to pull? Seeing Melanie, yes, please.
Yes, yes. I'd like to pull number five.
Number five, okay. Any other items? Seeing none. Okay, do we have a motion for the rest? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you have an item that you wanted to pull? I apologize. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to request that F5 was pulled from consent.
Thank you so much.
Listen, Mayor, I'd like to move that the consent calendar be approved. Item number's F1 to item number F4.
Okay.
Second. Second.
Gus, Melanie? Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with the motioner. Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Still in Zoom land, sorry about that. Yeah, I wanted to pull this item for further discussion. I feel like at the last meeting, there was a bit of a bait and switch about the policy. And considering the amount of correspondence that we heard from folks, I would like to reconsider this and hear from the public about their concerns.
If it's okay with the council, I don't know if you want me to open to the public first, or if you guys want to discuss and then open?
I don't know if we want to recap the staff report from the last meeting, and then...
Okay, we can do that. David, would you like to go over that if you don't mind?
Mayor, members of council, happy to give an overview on this item. So the item before you tonight, listed as F5 on the consent agenda, has been pulled at the request of Councilmember Bagby and also a member of the public. The item is in regards to amendment of the adopted flag policy to include the Rotary Peace Flag. At your previous meeting on February 8th, council received an agenda report that provided an overview of Rotary's request to install a peace flag on the plaza. There were various flags that council reviewed as part of that discussion. Ultimately, the council's direction was to support, or the council indicated they were in support of the Rotary's request to install a new flag pole that would be provided by their organization, and likewise selected a particular flag out of about six options that would be displayed on that, on that flag pole. Again, recapping the location for that flag pole was on the northeast corner of the grassy area within the city plaza adjacent to City Hall. The pole again would be, and the flag would both be provided by Rotary. The council's adopted flag policy didn't contemplate the peace flag, so it was necessary, based on council's direction at your previous meeting, to add the Rotary Peace Flag as an approved commemorative flag in the policy. As part of that conversation or discussion, there was direction provided to designate the Rotary-provided flag pole as the location for commemorative, for the display of commemorative flags. As such, staff did amend the adopted policy to include the Rotary Peace Flag and also list the timeframe and location for its display. Concurrently, the location for other commemorative flags, which included the flag to recognize or draw attention to violence against children, as well as the rainbow or pride flag, was amended to reflect that they would be displayed likewise on the commemorative flag pole with the same dates as was included in the original adopted flag policy. So what's included in your packet is an amended policy that reflects that direction. I think to summarize, some of the concerns that were expressed in correspondence once the agenda was published was concern that they, there's a real interest in maintaining the original location for the rainbow pride flag on the flag pole at City Hall. So I think that's the kind of the point of discussion here is whether to continue with the direction to allow for the display of the pride flag on the commemorative flag pole, or continue in its originally proposed location on the flag pole in front of City Hall. I do want to note that we don't currently have co-located flag poles. That's typically the standard where most cities who have commemorative flag policies, they often have co-located flag poles. Given the location of our current flag pole at City Hall, it does, we don't have a co-located flag pole. And so what currently is required is to place a commemorative flag, it's necessary to remove the state flag and then replace the state flag for the period specified in the policy with the commemorative flag. So that's a little bit of background on the action that was taken at the previous council meeting. It's well within council authority to, you know, consider amendments to the flag policy. And again, this was, the intent of the flag policy is to recognize public speech and the public sentiment of the council. It's not a vehicle necessarily for all free speech. So I just want to make that clear, that that's the purpose of the flag policy is to really to set out policies for identifying where appropriate in the values of the council to display commemorative flags. That's really the end of my report, Mayor. Members of council, happy to address any questions you may have about the policy. Likewise, I did want to indicate, given council's direction, one of the actions that we were requesting with the resolution this evening was authorization to enter into an agreement with Rotary. The terms are spelled out in the agenda report, and likewise in the resolution that's included in your packet. Whether you decide to go with the policy as is provided in your packet or amend it further, staff would recommend that you continue to adopt the resolution that's in your packet based on your direction to move forward with the dedication of a flag pole by Rotary on the city plaza.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
And since we're going off of the way we went last time, I see Dolph Green in our audience. I don't know if you're prepared for this, Dolph, but I would like to see if you could give us a quick overview of how we came to this point, and what, you know, since you can represent the Rotary on this peace pole.
Thank you for having me back.
Thank you.
So just kind of listening to a few things and got my prepared remarks, but, you know, for me, the peace flag was really about, you know, giving people a place to reflect and think about it. So, and I think, I hope all the other flags are about that, too. I mean, so I'm going to kind of go with my prepared remarks, and then if people have questions, by all means. But so thank you for allowing me to speak with some thoughts on the Rotary Peace Pole. When I approached Mayor Lance about this project, he asked if we would have any issues with other flags hanging with ours, our Rotary. Fundamentally, Rotary does not, right? We certainly don't with a pride, an LGBTQ pride flag, or violence against children commemorative flags. You know, these are two areas I think that most people hopefully can universally agree need attention, right? They need reflection, and more importantly than that, I think, education. And so that's kind of what we were trying to do. I will say, I'm a little disappointed because I met with David and city workers, you know, that there are some people in the community that don't think that location for a peace flag, because I think personally, peace is the overriding thing. I know I've got a time limit here, but, you know, if you have peace in the family, or peace in your house, you don't have violence against children. It's easier for younger people to tell their parents about their sexual preferences. So I think peace just ties everything together, but that's kind of our passion, right? That's where we come from. So I think that that flag location is prominent. It's prominent enough for peace. I think it's prominent for other causes. I will say, we talked about this, I mean, for me, put it dead center of the lawn, right? We talked about other places where I want it to be visible and seen, but then it's like, got to check with the farmer's market, Friday Night Live, all that stuff. So just trying to say, okay, I want to get something up and done to plant that seed. We picked that corner location, which I think is prominent and good. I do think it's very good. So, you know, if it was a, hey, you know, we could put this flag above City Hall for the peace flag, for me personally, I just, you know, just from my views of what it's supposed to mean, I wouldn't do it. I just don't think that's a very visible spot. So I think that we're missing the idea of reflection, education, and community that can occur at that lawn area. Reflection, education, and community events are hard things to do on the sidewalk in front of City Hall, and then I didn't realize you're pulling one flag down to pull another flag up. You know, this would be a flag that would be dedicated there. So it's about the reflection and that opportunity to present to the community, to stop and think about what is the meaning, what it's about, and the importance of to try and create further understanding of that cause or that group. And for me, it's peace, right? That's what it is. For Rotary, it would be finding that time to hold an event there, and I certainly would hope that the other people who had commemorative flags would think about that as it relates to violence against children and pride. So I would invite anyone, you know, I'm a local businessperson, be happy to walk it with you, talk through that with you as I did with David, and kind of consider as you look at the area, and this is just my view, and it's just my opinion, but what really pays greater tribute or recognition to the cause of which we believe in, and for us, peace? You know, when I drive down the city, I don't really look up at that thing. It's up there, I suppose, but I don't really notice it. I've talked to other people, they didn't really notice it either. And that's why I think for the peace flag, as well as commemorative flags, a dedicated area makes so much more sense to me, because I want to be able to hold events there. I want to have a focal point. And I just, for me, above City Hall isn't it? But that's another issue. That's, you guys deal with that on that. For the peace flag, I like it standalone. I like its focus. I like the benches that you have there so that you can sit and talk to your kids or the community and hold events. I just think it's a perfect location. I noticed in there, too, and I didn't really understand, David, you know, Rotary has a budget for the cost of installation. Clearly, there's rules where we can't apparently install that, but we do have a budget to help offset the cost of installation. I wanted to put that out. It's a very simple concrete base as far as that's concerned. Didn't seem like it would be a whole lot of money. So I certainly hope you'll approve the peace pole project. I think that it's an important one. I think we need to bring that to the world. But I do think just for those other folks, you know, walk through that spot and ask yourself, I mean, do you want that flag flying in its own location that I think for the world to see and that you could actually hold events and rally behind? That brings value to that, but that for me is peace. That's the cause I'm here about. So thank you for your time and any consideration given our peace flag project. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Dolph. If any questions pop up, I'll have you come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, bring to the dais, who wants to go first?
Thank...
Questions or comments?
Well, Dolph, I had a question for you on the, for the peace flag. Sorry, I'll let you get back to... So the location and all that, and I understand Rotary is going to be funding it. Granted, city people will jump in and give you guys a hand, but when it comes to, on the decision of maybe some commemorative flags, now are we looking at the Rotary Peace Flag being flown at the top nonstop? Or is there an option to have other flags fly at the top during designated months?
You know, I think we wanted the, I mean, you know, I get some back and forth with Rotarians who just want to see a peace flag because we want the focus on peace. And when we say Rotary Peace Flag, realize that is not a Rotary Peace Flag, it's just a peace flag that Rotary's supplying. So Rotary doesn't have its Rotary Peace Flag, just to clarify that. You know, we got to trust the city's going to put up flags that are appropriate, that have a universal appeal to people, because I had some other folks saying I won't bring up the flags they talked about, but it's like, well, I mean, I kind of hope the city would put that flag up, right? So in terms of ours always being on top, I mean, I tend to think, yes, we really want that flag on top and the reason for that, and again, this is our passion, it's our next thing, peace is where it all begins, right? Got peace in your heart, you're going to have peace in the family. And if you have it in the family, you can have it in the neighborhood. If it's in the neighborhood, it's going to be in the city, and it's just got to grow that way. We all kind of got to, my view, start to think about that a little bit. That answered your question, but...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess you can hear me okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Dolph, I like the location. You know, I've had a chance to walk it, nice grassy patch area there, the little cement alcove that kind of sticks out would be ideal. And I agree with you, it's a good place to have a celebration of whatever flag you're so inclined to. I guess the thing that concerns me is, you know, I've had a chance to do some research on commemorative flags, and I actually even sent off an email to the state requesting any protocol that they may have on their flags that are flown at the Capitol. And as of yet, I haven't heard from them. But everything that I've done, and all the research, it kind of alludes to the fact that the city's flag poles are not intended to serve as a forum for any particular group. And when we first decided to fly commemorative flags on the city flag pole, there was no other choice. Now that we have a choice, I have a feeling that I would prefer to see it on a commemorative pole. But a question for our city attorney, you know, and I just fear that at some point in time, we are going to get sued by a group that we would prefer not to have represented on that flag pole by an individual who doesn't necessarily agree with us. So I guess my question to you, Jose, is number one, could the city possibly be sued if we do one flag and yet we don't do another one that we don't agree with?
So just the, and I think you pointed to a good section of Vice Mayor, so even the city's policy right now does define the, what a commemorative flag is, and it also states that the city's flag poles are not intended to serve as a forum of free expression by the public. And the city can display commemorative flags only if authorized by the city council as an expression of the city council's official sentiments. So it's really something that comes from the council, approved by the council. In fact, it's a council member that needs to enter the policy, a council member bringing it up, and the council agreeing as, it's almost the, it's really the government's speech. It's not meant to be kind of something for freedom of expression or anything like that. If you abide by, and the reason why the policies are created is to limit exposure, I know this issue came up about whether we had a policy or not a while back, the policy is intended to limit exposure of somebody saying, well, why not this flag, why not that flag? The reality is, it is government's speech. It is brought by, through the, through a council member and the council...
Okay, so then the answer to my question is, could we be sued?
I mean, Vice Mayor, you could definitely be sued, somebody saying freedom of speech, et cetera. You've provided somebody the opportunity, not somebody else. Yes, that could definitely come up, but again, that's why with the policy, that was meant to limit exposure.
And Dolph, a quick question for you. I already know the answer, but I just want to make sure everybody understands, the city will be deciding what flags are going to be flown on that peace flag pole. The city will be deciding what flags are going to be flown on that peace flag pole that you want to install, and it won't be Rotary.
Future under flags?
Yes. Thank you.
And, and just for the, also for the record, Vice Mayor, if I may, Mayor?
Please, yes.
To the mayor, the, the deal points also in the resolution does state that the city council can decide to remove the Rotary, Rotary flag in the future at its discretion. And again, it controls its flag policy and its society, and it's not bound by a certain flag all the time. The council gets to decide.
And one more question, and I hate to be a hog on the microphone here, but Dolph, I, I understand that Rotary would prefer to have the peace flag flown at top, but they also have streamers that can replace that flag. Would it be possible that a streamer could be placed at top and then another commemorative flag underneath it that doesn't have one of the ones that you want to fly? I don't know if that made any sense.
So the answer to that? Have you ever heard of the concept of a streamer?
Yeah. Well, I've seen those streamers before that kind of substitute a flag, in the sense it is a flag and it might say peace, world peace on it, but it's not the big huge flag, it's a little streamer.
Yeah, I mean, I would not be, we would not be too fired up for something like that. We want a pretty significant statement about peace.
Well, for approval.
So is that what you're saying, to replace the flag we had shown the other day? Yeah, I mean, at the end, you know, we got to trust the city councils, because I had people say that to me, what about these other flag? You know, I got to trust the city council is going to make the right decision. And, and my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, once we do this, it's really yours. The only thing we've agreed to is, we'll replace the flag when it gets tattered, because that's 30 bucks and I got no issue with that. But it's, we're just trying to put in a project, but it's the city's, once we walk away, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I, you know, I appreciate what Rotary is doing, and, and I'm wholeheartedly supporting the erection of that flag pole. But like I said, as it stands now, I'd prefer to have all commemorative flags on that pole, simply because we've never had the choice before. Now that we do, I, I just kind of like to keep the American flag and the state flag separately, but that's just my trust.
I agree with what Gus says.
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not in agreement. I mean, this is just a, this is, it seems to me like it's a pretty cynical attempt to just move the pride flag off of City Hall for one month a year. And the, the violent, the anti-violence against children's flag is kind of, you know, getting caught up in the churn. This is really disappointing direction, and what it'll mean is that Cloverdale will likely be the only city in Sonoma County that does not play the, the pride flag during pride month. I think that sets a terrible precedent and example. I think that the previous, the, the way that we have done this for years has been under the direction of staff and city attorneys, and has carefully protects the city against litigation as much as you possibly can in a very litig- litigious society. We've, for years, made the concession to the non-violence against children's flag accompanied by a resolution and a discreet period in which it was flown. It also would, the, the flying of the pride flag would mark pride month, and it would also be accompanied with a resolution saying, saying that the, the city supports the protected class, the constitutionally protected class that the, the flag symbolizes. So, you know, any discussion of, oh, free speech or First Amendment, I think are just really kind of cynical red herrings. And I, like, certainly, I'm looking forward to the peace initiative that the Rotary is undertaking, and certainly, you know, welcome public-private partnerships for things like this at, at City Plaza. I just, I, I think that this is clearly an excuse to not fly the pride flag, and I think that that's wrong. I think it's a terrible precedent for, precedent for us to set, probably being the only city. And certainly, you know, the county, I'm sure flies the pride flag during, during pride month. So unfortunately, I, I can't support this. And, you know, just would hope that the folks in Cloverdale Rotary would understand what, you know, my motivation is, which is, I think that this is being used in a very cynical manner to remove the pride flag for one month a year off of City Hall. It's never caused a problem before. I think it's an important statement for the council to make, that we support the ideals and the principles behind the, the pride flag. And I disagree with some of the comments as, as well. I think you have to fight for peace, you have to fight for equity, you have to fight for justice for children, you have to fight for justice for LGBTQ citizens, and you have to stand up and, and do what's right. And I, that's why I just can't be silent about this issue, and unfortunately, I can't support this at this time.
Mayor, can I just do a follow-up? Councilmember Bagby, this council member still wants a resolution every year celebrating gay pride. It has nothing to do with where the flag is placed. The city will now have two flag poles. We'd have the one that we fly the American flag on and the state flag, and the other one which we would fly commemorative flags on. I, I'm not sure why it has to be on the City Hall flag that's in front of City Hall as opposed to City Hall's flag that's in the pole, that's in the plaza. But by no means are we looking to stop supporting gay pride in our community.
Well, quite frankly, to me, it smacks of being separate but equal. I think it's important that the pride flag flies on City Hall. If we disagree on that, I'm, I'm happy to just peacefully disagree on, at that point, but I think that's an important statement for the city council and the staff of the city of Cloverdale to say, we are going to fly the rainbow flag on pride month and support LGBTQ, the, our, members of our, members of our community, and the members who we've lost. So that's, that, that's, and if we disagree, then, then that's fine, but, you know, for that reason, I can't support this.
My choice is not meant to go against gay pride. I mean, you know, I support everybody in this community, and we're still going to display the flag, we're still going to do the resolution, but whatever.
I, I, personally, I see it as being a separate but equal issue, so I can't support it.
So I want to comment, starting with the idea of this being a bait and switch. This idea Dolph and I started six months ago, probably, I think is around the timeframe, and I apologize for not knowing exact dates. And when he came to me with this idea of, of something to hold for world peace and to have somewhere for people to go, I just thought it was perfect, because to me, flying the, the pride flag and doing that every year just seems like a check-the-box thing. We do the resolution, we put the flag up, it's great, we love it, but now, I wanted to go one step further. I wanted to show community, put it out for the community, not City Hall, but for the city, for everyone to have a place to go and think about. This is what we discussed for hours, we've had multiple discussions about this, ways to do it, ways to, to make our community better, make us stand out, give, give people pride and somewhere to go, and somewhere to feel good, somewhere to go with their kids, like Dolph said, that's been discussed multiple times. Somewhere to bring your kids and educate and to reflect on the things that have happened in our past. Over, over City Hall, it doesn't, it, it doesn't even stand out. It, it's, I understand that it's, it's representing for City Hall as a, as a political gesture. However, I, I want to go one step further. I don't want it to be a political gesture, I want it to be a, a community gesture, just like, just like with the, the Child Abuse Awareness Month. I want that to stand out. I want this to be something that people can be proud of, that we, we're putting it in the downtown plaza, that to me, you know, the, one of the first discussions was putting it near the library, and we were both like, no, let's put it right, right smack dab in the middle of downtown, so everyone sees it. It's the perfect spot. Had nothing to do with a bait and switch, had nothing to do with removing it from City Hall, it was trying to go one step further, and that is the honest-to-God truth about this. Talk about separate but equal, that one bothers me because it seems like you're trying to drag an old racial statements into this to, to gain ground. However, I understand civil rights and how this affects people, and I completely understand. I had a talk today with one of our friends in the community about how he's nervous about gay marriage having the chance to go away, and I said, I understand. I said, because I don't think that government's done their job, and leaving things in the hands of the, of the Supreme Court leaves it up for interpretation. And until the government, which I understand why no one trusts them, because I'm in the same boat with you guys right now, if you don't trust your government to do the right thing, here's where we are, and now we're divided on things that we're trying to represent. And what we should be doing is having our government come together and show it as a federal statement that we're here for the same reasons. I was surprised to hear today, and I hadn't noticed, that we took down the California flag to fly another flag, and I don't think that actually is legal through military policies, but I don't, that doesn't matter to me, that's not the point of this, but that surprised me, and that would be something that, if this didn't pass, that we would have to look into how that works. I, I want to thank everyone that emailed me, because it means our, our community has passion and you care, and you feel comfortable enough to reach out to me and tell me how you feel. It doesn't bother me that some people had the same email with a different name, because there's a lot that was in those, a lot of passion, a lot of heart, and I appreciate that. So.
What was the plan?
So when we would put up a commemorative flag, you have to take the state flag off and not have it there. So you could, because we only have room for two.
Which I didn't know until today either.
So my goal is to make somewhere for community, and I apologize if it wasn't represented correctly, or told to the public sooner or in a better way. So if it felt like it was a bait and switch, I apologize, I should have done a better job of that and getting the word out sooner. With that, I'm going to open up to public for the public comments. Does anyone in our audience have something? Could you please state your name for me? Thank you, sir.
Yes. I'm Richard Green, G R W E N E. I'd like to thank everyone who mentioned the importance of creation and action for the community to take. Good evening, Mayor Lands, city council members, city staff, and fellow citizens. I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak to you, to ask you to please vote no on or table the matter for further discussion. My mom always encouraged me to speak out if I saw something wrong, and I'm imagining the better angel of her spirit on my shoulder right now, encouraging me to stand and speak to you, because it's the right thing to do. The existing federal flag code guides, the existing federal flag codes guide flag presentation adequately. To develop and overlay a local policy furthers a divisive, wrong-minded intent. The underlying issue seems to have been brought forward because some folks are skittish about a discomfort conjured by the physical proximity of a rainbow banner hung on a flagpole halyard in common with and below the national flag of the United States. I would argue that such a limited view belittles and actually casts a shadow on the very patriotic symbol that it is your intention to hold in highest honor. You cannot allow that. I learned at my mother's knee and from the Boy Scout handbook that the national flag of the United States is itself to be considered and treated as a potently living thing. The greenest tenderfoot learns and holds true that concept, and understands that anything hung below the national flag of the United States is by default a less potent secondary symbol. You seem to have a misapprehension or misgivings about that. I think that it is to our collective societal good to embrace the opportunity to display, ponder, and share our thoughts about the relationship that the national flag of the United States has to social issues. Symbols depicting MIAs, battered and abused children, LGBTQ plus quality, community solidarity, and racial tolerance, campaigns for mental health, and even a Rotary World Peace Friendship promotional banner generate thought and are already allowed within the current legal guidelines. Honor the national flag of the United States, allow it to live up to its dignity and grandeur, and embrace the vital living goodness that it symbolizes. The wrong-minded scheme to create a secondary other-issue flagpole sponsored by a non-government agency in a public space in no way meets our community needs. The current plan and the intention to allow a Rotary Club flag to be positioned at the top of a solitary flagpole in the civic center in the absence of the national flag of the United States hanging above it is unconscionable. Do the right thing and abandon this Trojan horse measure. We must raise only the living national flag of the United States as the symbol at the apex of any solitary flagpole in the city center complex. The display of other symbols above it is unthinkable, their placement at a lower level is completely permissible and truly benign. Please vote no, table the action, and allow further discussion. Thank you all, thank you, Mom, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Good evening, Jane Elias, Cloverdale. Thank you for bringing back this discussion, I appreciate it, Mayor Lands and City Council. I was one of the people that did submit correspondence to City Manager Kelly regarding specifically about the expenses, and since then, I have had a conversation with him about that. It is still unclear to me, and it does seem that there is going to be city expense in putting another flagpole in the plaza. I, I have to respectfully disagree with you, Mayor Lands. I don't think this is a political issue, I think it is a community issue, and I think it's highly important that the pride flag stay on the main City Hall flagpole at this point in time and not be relocated around the corner to possibly a second flagpole that I don't think at this point in time should be put in that place, and that the city staff and resources should be expended out to do so. I think at this point in time, it's probably best to take option one and leave it as is, and wait until the new City Hall is constructed, at which time proper planning can take place and the appropriate number of flagpoles can be put in a location to accommodate the national flag, the state flag, and any commemorative flags at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience?
Thank you to the city council, my name is Maria Alvarez, I'm a psychologist here in Cloverdale, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. As a psychologist and the mother of a trans child, and someone who has worked extensively with LGBT community, I can tell you that people who are persecuted walk into an environment looking for signs that they are safe. And when a community places that flag at City Hall, it's conveying a message, and the message is, you are safe here, we care about you, we will protect you. And that flag has been there, and that community is our community, and we have conveyed that message. And to now choose to intentionally remove it and place it in a different location will convey a message to the community, to those persecuted people, and to their allies. So as you make this decision, I implore you to consider that you are definitely conveying a message. It may not be the message you intend, and I want to alert you that it will be read as a sign of pulling back support. And for many, it will inspire fear. This town gets referred to as Cloverteke. I'm so proud to live in Cloverdale, I hate it when people call it that. What they mean to say is that in some way we are backward and oppressive. I don't think we are that, I think we're a community of intelligent, caring, loving people, and I have experienced that in this. And I have experienced that in this community, and I want that for all children. And so I just invite you to consider my words as a mother, as a psychologist, and as a citizen of this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Walker James Rogino. And my first thought about the secondary flagpole is that I like it as a compromise. But like all compromises, you've got to give up something. When Prop eight passed, I was so disgusted. I actually wrote an editorial that got published. The American flag doesn't fly for me. My flag is the pride flag. June is kind of sacred to me. If I can have a month, I'll, you know, whatever you do 11 months of the year is fine. But I actually like the commemorative flag idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Reese Fox and live here in Cloverdale. Location bothers me. Is that better? Okay. It's hidden by a tree, and you move it back, and you're near a bathroom. I mean, it just is a junky place to have it. Thirty feet, you're at the city. Hundred feet, you're at the police station. I think there was some misleading information regarding the Rotary that was given last time, too. It's a fabulous organization, absolutely. Founded in 1905, and by 1912, it was international. It's worked hard for communities all over the world, eradicating polio. From 125 countries in 1988, they're down to two today. But they're still asking for help. They still have that as a high priority in what they're going to accomplish. They want those two countries reduced to. Peace has always been a component of them. In 1945, they were a major component in establishing the United Nations programs, and they've been part of that ever since. As I said, peace has always been a part of Rotary. In 2016, World Peace Conference happened, and San Bernardino County and Riverside Counties got together. They're District 5330 in the Rotary International Division. And they established the Rotary E-Club for World Peace. It's a Rotary E-Club for World Peace, and they work under the auspices of the Rotary International. It was not the Rotary International that created this whole peace move. It's always been a part of their, their program. But they weren't the one that created. Rotary's mission statement is provide service to others, promote integrity, and advance world understanding, goodwill, and peace through fellowship of business, professional, and community leaders. So the reason I'm standing here is that 45% of the LGBTQ children, 13 to 24, seriously consider suicide as a result of mistreatment and being stigmatized by society. Forty-five percent. Eighteen percent actually succeed. That really bothers me. So it's rejection and being stigmatized is why this happens. Fifty-two percent reported being bullied in person or electronically, and three times greater odds at suicide. Seventy-three percent have at least one incident of discrimination, two times greater odds at suicide. And the key factors in changing these statistics is those living in an accepting community markedly lower the rates, 40 to 50% in suicide issues. So walking down the street, seeing that flag flying out in front of city hall says a community as a whole supports you. A community as a whole supports you. Sending a message to those who are not gay that we are an accepting community. Think of the whole community, not just the parts you agree with. Think of what's best for everyone in your community, not just those that follow your belief system. And think of children having to grow up in Cloverdale. This is not a public forum. Rather, it is a city making a statement. What kind of city do you want Cloverdale to be? I doubt seriously with California's stances that they would reject or be upset at having the California flag removed for one month a month, one month a year, or having it removed for violence towards children one month a year, or having it removed for peace for a period of time during the year. Who knows? Again, what kind of community do you want? An accepting community or rejecting one? Keep the rainbow flag, keep the children's memorial flag, keep the Rotary, or add the Rotary Peace Flag if you wish. But make a statement and keep them up front. Keep them in front of the city hall where people walking down the streets can see them, not hidden in a corner by a bathroom. Thank you.
Ma'am. Comments in the audience? Seeing none, I'll go to the virtual.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks like no one's raising their hands online at this time.
Anyone online wants to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the dais. Who wants to go first?
Mayor, I'll go. I've been in Cloverdale for about six years. And when I moved up here, I really, I automatically loved Cloverdale and realized it is a very accepting community. And I agree with you when they call it Clover-Tucky. You know, people are going to say that, whether I don't agree with that at all. And I think my thought process on this, and we, like the vice mayor said, we never had a second pole. And in my opinion, by the Rotary Club pole back there on the plaza, it's higher visibility than the pole that is in front of city hall right now. I talked to citizens today, as a matter of fact, and they said, I don't even notice the American flag up there when I walk by here it flapping, but I don't see it. It's impeded by two big orange trees right there. So I'm just saying, I think that, that there's higher visibility back there on the plaza. More people are going to see it. Friday Night Live people are going to see it. And there's a place to sit and, and like Dolph said, is reflect on this and think about things. And that's why I asked the question. Is, is the, the flag for the peace flag that the Rotary is proposing going to be always on top? Is that an option to move the pride flag to the top for the month of June and display it at the top? I think that's something that we will talk to Dolph about and, and make a decision on. But I think, in my opinion, that that is the best place for the flag. I don't understand, personally, I don't understand the city hall is, there's not enough visibility for the American flag up there, let alone commemorative flags. So I, I'm, I'm supporting the commemorative, or the commemorative flagpole in the plaza, 100%.
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, thank you, and I appreciate the input from the audience. I also, there are two, we heard from two mental health professionals who have done extensive work with equity and gender issues, and they're saying that it's detrimental to our residents and to our kids. I think that unfortunately, you know, the, the mayor and one other white male resident took it upon themselves to do, you know, some of the legwork on this. And I think that this is an example of why discussions of this nature need to be done in public and include the community. And I think we've heard very clearly from the community that, you know, we're not, we're not against the, this flagpole. But putting the, taking the pride flag off of city hall, which is an annual statement accompanied by a resolution of the city council, is, it is, it's a statement about our values, and it's not consistent with, with our community. So, you know, I, it's unfortunate that it has, it has come to this. But I think it's very clear when you have two mental health professionals who tell us what the impact of moving the pride flag off of city hall really is. You, you need to listen to that and kind of disregard your personal, you know, your life experience and maybe what your intentions were, and, and listen to what they're saying. So, and, and that, that was my concern, is that I just really, did that seem like this was thought through? And how it would really affect a significant portion of our community and the message that it, that it would send? So, yeah, unfortunately, I, I can't support this tonight.
You?
I have a question if it would be possible if we could leave the pride flag up all year on the plaza flagpole, maybe as a compromise so people feel better about us moving the flag to the plaza.
I'm not against that. I want to know what the other people, I'd like that to go out to the public a little bit more and have them more time on this. So that would be something that we could amend the policy that I completely support. But I would like to have more public input because I don't know if that would upset anybody with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Councilmember Bagby, I have to tell you, I'm not pleased with your comment about two white males. I mean, come on, we're in Cloverdale there. You know, my thoughts are, number one, I want to go ahead with allowing.
It's what happened, Mr. Mayor, and I.
Point of order. If we can have one council member speak at a time.
Okay. You know, we, we've got a couple items here. Number one, I just want to make sure that everyone knows I support the installation of the flagpole in the plaza where it's designated. And number two, I'd like to adopt the flag policy effective 2024. So for 2023, I'd like to see it remain as is, where the gay pride, gay pride flag is flown at city hall. That'll give us 12 months to maybe look at doing another flagpole in front of city hall so that we could have the commemorative flag there, right outside of the kitchen window. I'm not sure if we could, but it'll give us some time to take a look at that. And then we would have two prominent flagpoles in front of city hall. And we'd have the, the, the third one in the plaza, so Rotary can fly their peace flag, and we can do some other commemorative flags there as well. So that would be my compromise for now.
So is that, are you trying to make a motion to amend, or are you just making an idea?
Well, I'd like to see if anyone else would support that.
Bring it back to everybody on the council?
I would support that.
I agree on that. I would go with, you know, this year, the one flagpole we have in front of city hall is continue to fly the pride flag. But I do 100% on board with the idea, Vice Mayor, of maybe entertaining a second flagpole out there. And I'm also on board with the peace flag. I do like, I do like the position of it in the plaza. I think it's a great idea. But I do think that, I mean, we, maybe we do have the room out there to entertain a second flagpole at the city, at city hall. So that's something maybe we can discuss. Yes.
David, has staff looked into that?
Staff did not do an evaluation for placement of an additional pole within the planter area at city hall. However, I hear council, and we certainly, our park superintendent is here as well. In fact, I was just looking at Google Maps, and, you know, it's, it's clear that there are a lot of vegetation obstructions to the existing flagpole. So I think coming with an evaluation of whether an additional flagpole could be supported would be what kind of vegetation management would occur in front of city hall to improve visibility of our, of our US flag and our commemorative, and state flag commemorative flags. I did want to, if I can, Mayor, just address one question I think that was imposed by council, and that is relative to placement of flags. Of course, the, the US flag code calls for the, the US flag to be displayed at the top of the pole in a prominent location. The question came up about the location of the peace flag. Council ultimately sets direction and can, and can place any flag it so chooses in the, in, in an appropriate location. It's your determination, your direction. So for instance, if during Pride Month, which is the month of June, if you so choose to fly the pride flag, you could fly that on top of the Rotary Peace Flag, even though the Rotary Peace Flag may fly on a year-round basis. So I just wanted to clarify that question. It's really council's decision as to which, which one would fly on top. There's really no discretion with, with respect to the US flag, however.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Bagby, I see you're all familiar. Would you like to make another comment?
I'm sorry, I just was hoping that we could have a restatement of the motion.
There really isn't a motion. It was more of a different direction. So at this point, there is no motion on the floor.
Could, could Vice Mayor Walter rephrase his suggestion? I couldn't quite pick it up.
Councilmember Bagby, what I'm proposing is that we, we approve the resolution as submitted with the exception of the effective date being 2024 for the changeover of flags that are currently flown at the city flagpole in front of city hall. It's basically the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So then the motion on the floor, if, if I'm taking it as a motion, is to move to approve with an effective date of January 1, 2024?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Right. And then in the, with the understanding, and of course, this won't be in the resolution, with the understanding that in the interim, a particular subcommittee, and I think it would probably be Public Works, would look at the feasibility of doing a second flagpole. And it is ideal because in, in what I've been reading, when you have two flagpoles, the main focal point, the American flag should be on the left, and that would work perfectly. So look into the feasibility of having a second flagpole put up in front of city hall.
Jose, you want to make a comment?
Yes, if the motion, can I, I'll go ahead and I'll read the resolution. It would be a resolution of the council of the city of Cloverdale approving an amended flag policy for the outdoor display of flag by the city of Cloverdale, and in agreement with the Cloverdale Rotary policy to install a flagpole on the Park Plaza for display of a peace flag and other commemorative flags approved by the city council. It will be, it's amended as reflected in your packet, and also with the amendment of, in the actual policy attached to the resolution, there is section 6.1.2, which states current commemorative flags approved by the city council with the, I believe, the children's memorial flag and the pride flag stating, starting 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
No.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Passes four to one. Jose or David, do we need to bring Councilmember, Vice Mayor Walter's suggestion back on future agenda items? We need to document now, and we're good to go.
I think direction was provided in the motion to bring it, bring it back and refer it to a council subcommittee.
Thank you.
And, and just, just for the record, I, it would be the council's wish to, to do that as just as direction. We don't need a motion, but if we could go forward also potentially asking for, I know there's been some discussion regarding when, for example, flags that are out for that month, what position they fly as mentioned by the city manager. That's not dictated by an agreement. That's not going to be dictated by an agreement. The flagpole would be the city's, and the city council decides what flag flies where, also what flag to remove as well.
Thank you for clarification.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I could, you know, Councilmember Bagby was mentioning the proclamation that we do every year. You know, that's not going to go away. You know, we will be doing that next year and the year and many years to come. So I don't want you to think that two white men got together and are trying to undo that. That's the furthest thing from the truth.
Okay, moving forward. H, new business. H1, continued discussion on potential. H1, continued discussion on potential participation in countywide ban on construction of new gas station infrastructure. Anyone need a break?
Yeah.
All right, you know what? We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 7:10.
Between now and then, I think it's a waste of staff's time to be working on this and the Planning Commission to hear it. So my vote is we just tabled the item for now.
Vice Mayor on this one?
I agree with Gus.
At this point, I will open it up to public. If anyone in our audience would like to make any comments on this, please come forward. We might know who you are, but like everyone else, please state your name for us.
Hi, Rob Kozlowski, resident here in Cloverdale. And I agree with the sentiments I just heard about the Planning Commission. Others probably have more pressing items, but I think rather than banning gas stations in town, maybe it's time to update our Cloverdale Climate Emergency Resolution to include an added call for a just transition away from the use of rare earth minerals that are mined for solar panels, electric vehicles, and batteries using slave labor and processed by countries that violate human rights. I read Congress's multiple reasons to support bans on gas stations in Cloverdale. The same can be said for bans on solar panels and electric vehicle batteries, as well as backup battery systems in Cloverdale. Consider the following as another perspective and different view of what Congress has been saying. Every new solar system installation battery for electric vehicles, as well as those for solar backup battery systems, creates a new toxic site. Inevitable leaks pollute groundwater, soils, and plants, impacting health and wildlife habitats. Sonoma County will be riddled with leaching cells from the lead and cadmium in solar cells and from the leaching of cobalt, nickel, and manganese in lithium batteries. Additionally, the growing number of fires in landfills or battery recycling facilities will become more problematic going forward. Lithium, for example, is very difficult to extinguish once it combusts. Use second, use of rare earth minerals predominantly sourced from China is a growing environmental justice issue, given that every microgam of lead, cadmium, cobalt, and other rare earth mineral leaves behind a wake of destruction from the extraction to the processing to product realization, almost always disproportionately impacting indigenous and low-income communities. Furthermore, the use of such minerals condones and expands the use of slave labor and human rights violations. Ceasing to permit new EV charging stations is the first step in addressing these ongoing injustices. Third, use of higher-rate electric schemes and the ratcheting up of both state and federal tax dollars to fund unreliable and intermittent electric-based services for transportation and residential living is a form of wealth redistribution, wealth redistribution that takes from the poor and gives to the rich. I reiterate, rather than banning gas stations in Cloverdale, it may be time to update Cloverdale's Climate Emergency Resolution to include an added call for a just transition away from the use of rare earth minerals that are mined using slave labor and processed by countries that violate human rights. Regardless, I think Planning Commission's time is better spent on more pressing items than this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing no hands, Michael will go to the virtual.
Thank you, Mayor. No one is raising their hands from the attendees on Zoom either.
If anyone in Zoom world would like to make a public comment, now is your time to raise your hand. I'll give you a few more seconds. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the dais. I'm sorry, Reese, would you like to make a comment? I'm sorry, we'll wait for you. You're good. I apologize.
Thank you. I spoke once before on this issue, and there's a couple of things. I do feel that it's making a statement again. It's not necessarily going to result in anything positive or negative. It's making a statement. And I think being part of a larger community is important. And by, I think, six of the cities have now confirmed it. It's gone from the county Planning Commission with a unanimous vote to the board. And the other two cities besides Cloverdale, I'm not sure where they stand. I tried to find out by doing some research, but I didn't come up with anything. But I would like to see Cloverdale be part of the larger community and stand with them in banning gas stations. I don't think one way or the other is necessarily going to have any quote-unquote impact on Cloverdale per se, because I don't think people would be putting gas stations in. However, to me, again, it's a statement and being part of the community that's important. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Dave Delgado, and I had to chain up to get in here from Clover Springs this evening. I would agree with the sentiment that likely nobody in their right mind is going to want to build a gas station in the next 15 or 20 years, given the current circumstances, both with the state move movement toward reducing the sale of electric, of internal combustion engines. But I also think that it would be wise, when entering into this decision, to get input from the Planning Commission based upon our history with filling stations in the area, as well as the environmental costs of their decommissioning. So as a guy from Clover Springs, I would support the idea that this be turned to the Planning Commission so that whatever decision is made can be made with the best available information. Thanks a lot for taking my comment and for your service to the community.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else since it's kind of going that direction? Seeing none. Make sure there's still no hands. Still no hands. We'll bring it back to the dais.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt option number one. Don't adopt a provision on new gas station uses within the city.
On the floor, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Motion is second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
No.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lanz?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Page two, Dog Park Capital Improvement Project. David or Kevin? Okay. Thank you for coming. Those of you that are leaving, I appreciate you guys.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Staff's pretty excited to have the opportunity to bring this project forth for council discussion this evening. The action that we're asking council to consider tonight is a resolution that would take a number of actions. First, it would start with amending an existing capital improvement program project worksheet that was adopted by council for establishment of a new dog park. Secondarily, it would also approve a budget adjustment that would provide funding in the current fiscal year 2223 budget to begin work on the project, more specifically initiate some of the design work that's necessary. In addition, it would authorize, it would approve a license agreement with the Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit, or SMART, to utilize right-of-way, SMART right-of-way for the purposes of locating a dog park. And then, last but not least, would authorize or approve an agreement with Mo Engineering to conduct preliminary design work to design, primarily the focus would be design of an accessible path and of course with the Americans with Disability Act. So staff has put quite a bit of work in this project to bring it to this stage for council consideration. What we're going to do this evening is provide a brief presentation identifying the location of the proposed project, a little overview on the elements of the project, along with current cost estimates for the project. And then we'll, of course, pause and offer council, you know, opportunity for any questions or comments about what staff has developed thus far. So what I'd like to do at this point is go ahead and turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, Kevin Thompson, joining us in a welcome him to the dais, our Park Superintendent, Hector Galvin. We're going to go ahead and put up a copy of a presentation. Mike, if you want to, as soon as you're ready, post up the PowerPoint.
Thanks, David. I'll just try to walk through some of the nuts and bolts, and Hector's been integral in getting all these, all these numbers in here. And we've done our best to really get as good of estimates as we can. So can you advance it, Mike? So for the community, I think everyone in the council is probably aware where we're planning to locate the dog park. You can see where the SMART station is, and across the street to the south is the corp yard, Citrus Fair. So it's just south of the, of the train station on SMART property. And next slide. You wouldn't know it when you drive by, but it actually is really big, and it's flat, and it's, you know, in our view, really an excellent site for this type of use. Obviously, David, David mentioned the ADA trail. That's one of the challenges, is just getting people up from the parking lot into the entrance in an ADA fashion. But this is looking north. Hector took this picture yesterday. You can see it's, it's wide and it's pretty flat. Next slide. So here's, here's the fun part. We've come up with this, with this budget. We think it's pretty accurate. Obviously, the bulk of the cost is really the design of the ramp and the construction of the ramp. This estimate for the construction of the ramp was given to us by the engineer who's been out there. It's not an official, you know, engineer's estimate, but it's hopefully close to what it would be. You can see all the thought that went into everything that would be needed. It's not everything that could go into the park, but it would definitely get the park up and running. We did add a little bit more contingency at 20% this time. We normally add 10, just because some of the things are unknown. So, you know, potentially doesn't normally happen, but it could come under, under this estimate based on that 20% contingency. And, you know, if you have any specific questions about the items that we're proposing, Hector's probably the best person, but maybe I'll just cruise through this thing, and then we can come back to Hector, or we can bring this slide back up. So also in the staff report, next slide, please, Mike. We had some additional components. We, I, this, the, can you go back one sec, one second, Mike? The, there's one thing in here, I think it says in the staff report that's a four-foot fence on the fence estimate. It's actually for a five-foot fence. So I think it put four, but it's, it's five, it's a five-foot black cyclone fence. I think five, we did a little research, the neighboring cities' dog parks are typically five feet, so we think that would be better. Okay, sorry, Mike, can you go back again? I didn't mention in the staff report, because it kind of came up after it was distributed, is we talked to Lieutenant Parker, and he'd like to see some security cameras out there. We got kind of a back-of-the-napkin estimate on that at 10,000. There's some question about the electricity. We don't know the exact cost to bring that out there. There are some options. David came up with the idea of we want to put more cameras at the corp yard and potentially one at the gate where we think we need, and there could be one that maybe could be positioned to look at the dog park, to just maybe get enough of a view of the dog park. But we put this in, and we're going to ask that the council consider amending the budget by another 10, just so we can at least look into the security cameras and have the money if, if we go that route. But we'll continue to look at the corp yard route, that may be a cheaper option, because there's power there, and it would do a dual service for the, for the corporation yard. Next slide, Mike? So David already went through all the things that our resolution accomplishes, so I'm not going to go over those again. Maybe we can go back to the budget. That might be a good discussion sheet for our, for our discussion tonight. And I think that's the end of my report, unless you want to add something, Hector.
Now, Kevin, you pretty, pretty much covered the whole thing. Yeah, just on the contingency part, there's just a few items out there that we're not 100% sure of, so we wanted to put it up a little higher. As far as electrical for the cameras, that's, that's one item that we're still investigating. We're not 100% sure if we can still able to get some electrical, some power out to the site, so that's something we got to work on here in the next couple of weeks. But so far, it's going pretty good.
And Mayor, members of council, if I can, just a little bit of background as to how we got to this point tonight, the discussion about locating a dog park in our community. We know there was considerable interest by, by members of our community, and we concur, there's a tremendous need for a site to allow for our, our dogs, our canines to, you know, have a space to recreate themselves. We, we did, and really to the credit of staff, they did a lot of evaluation of different alternatives, and actually did some ranking of those alternatives. And we kind of honed in on this site based on, you know, some particular aspects that are offered here at this particular location. When we'd like to bring some, some additional focus and attention to our train depot, we think it's kind of underutilized, and it's an opportunity to bring additional members of our community to, you know, an underutilized site. We'd, we'd like to see it used. There's some offices there, and we think it can be, you know, a potential attraction and opportunity for our business community, and to bring additional patrons there that are using the dog park with the business, you know, again, brings, brings some focus to that, that site. The, the train station also offers some amenities or features that we think will, will value the, the location of a dog park in this, in this proposed location. That includes the adjacent parking lot, so folks that maybe who cannot walk or choose not to walk, they'll have a space to, to park. There's opportunities for currently ADA parking. Part of the scope, of course, is to improve that accessible path to, to the site, is so that, you know, make sure that we're, we're providing a compliant, compliant pathway. So again, there's a little bit of background that kind of got us to this point. I, I think it will require some continued collaboration, both with, with SMART, and we see this as a tremendous opportunity. We did visit the site with, with the general manager and his engineering team, and that's kind of, you know, that's why the, the license agreement is required, because it is SMART property. So we, we think this, again, represents a real opportunity, again, next to the corp yard. It can have eyes on with, on a daily basis by our, our public works and park staff who utilize the corp yard as our, you know, kind of our, our, our maintenance space. And so there's, again, there's kind of this opportunities for co-location at that particular, particular site. So we're, again, we're excited to bring this forward. We think it represents an opportunity to finally deliver a dog park for, for our community.
Thank you, David. Bring it to council. First questions or comments?
I just want to say, thank you, Mayor, by the way. I just want to say that, I mean, I've been approached about this, I don't know how many times. That's one of the first questions I got, when's the dog park going in? So I know it's been around for a while, and I 100% support this. I think it's a good idea. We have, we have so many dogs in Cloverdale, they're running out of room to walk. So I think this is a great, a great utilization of that space, so I like it.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. First of all, what is the annual upkeep of the dog park specific chips, or anything else that's going to be specific to the dog park? And then also just a question regarding the lease and the questions about access to electrical, since we are leasing this from SMART. Is our, we just into early a stage to find out if we can get electrical from the building or any, you know, access any other resources from the building, or what's this, what's the status on that?
Remember, Bagby, yeah, so we're still in the preliminary stages of the, of investigating the power accessibility. That's something we need to work on. As far as maintenance goes, from a maintenance point of view, we're going to install some doggy stations that would have to be emptied twice a week. And as far as certified wood chips, I would think we would have to replenish those every three or four years.
So it, it sounds like, it's just through, through the mayor, if I may, it sounds like this is just the preliminary rundown before we move forward and come back with some, some firmer numbers and some firmer information from SMART. Is that the case?
Mayor, I think that's the characterization by Councilmember Bagby's accurate. We really wanted to seek council authorization to, you know, again, add the amendment to the CIP. Once we engage with a design consultant, one of the key components will be access to, you know, really all utilities, so water, because we know water is going to be an important utility to have access to, but also, but also electricity. And I think at the review, review of the project, at the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee, it was brought up about security. So it kind of brings, brings to light the idea that, you know, electricity would be, be needed. So we, we know there's power there, it's just, you know, is it appropriate, you know, can it be accessed? And if so, what, you know, what's required to access that power? So, and, and that's something we can have further conversations with, with SMART and the County Department of Infrastructure on, you know, what, what are the utilities that we can, we can access and collaborate with them on access to as part of this project?
Anything else, Councilmember Bagby? Councilmember Morganstern?
I just have a question. Like, the only dog park I'm familiar with is in Nevada, and there's different activities for the dogs to do, like a course they can run through and run through tunnels and things. Are we going to have that, or are we not in that planning stage yet?
We're hoping, given the amount of interest that we've had over the years, that, you know, maybe groups can take over some of those activities, and maybe we can help out. But I think this idea is really just to get this, get it on the ground. One of the ideas we talked about at the, at the planning subcommittee, which, you know, I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but maybe putting a sign out there and start looking for donations, because some of the, we would like to create a shade structure, which isn't included in here. So maybe get service clubs or material donations. So I think the idea here is get, get this thing up and running, and then if there's going to be programming, you know, we can help out with that and be involved, but we would hope that the community might take the lead on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there's some folks out in the audience that want to address this issue, but just a couple of things. Hector, just on the side note, what a fantastic job you and your crew did getting Cloverdale Boulevard ready for the parade on Saturday. The cleanup was great, the turnout was great, and, and you did a good job getting us some good weather, too.
Thank you.
So you can take the credit for that. And Derek, I want to thank you and your crews. Craig, I know, was up taking down the flags and the, and the Christmas lights the week before, so kudos to staff for doing that. Restrooms, did we talk about those at all? Porta-potties or opening the station to use theirs?
We, those are two options. We could do a porta potty or discuss with the county possible use of the train station, but we haven't gotten there yet. We discussed it at the subcommittee.
Yes. Just to get it out there in the public that we're still kind of looking for restrooms, we, we realize the importance of having them there. So, so that was basically it. Everything else was covered. I think it's a nice-sized space, 250 by 55, which is pretty big, so it'd be great.
Almost a football field.
Yeah.
Hector did call some other cities, and that was kind of the average size.
Yes, the standard size.
Good, good, good job. Thank you.
What about, is there, like, hours for this thing? Like, is it going to be a 24-hour-a-day deal, or? And the reason I ask this is I'm going to get that question immediately.
I think it'd be, as provided for in our municipal code, dawn to dusk.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, I think that, you know, a lot of the, the guidelines are going to be readily available, you know, the, the dark park at Villaschanna here in Hillsburg, and kind of, you know, let's learn from, you know, their successes and, and their mistakes. So I think that there, you know, there are a lot of really successful dog parks that, that we can certainly steal from. I just wanted to say, just happy to, you know, this is a kind of example of a real team effort. I mean, this is, you know, Kevin and Raphael sitting down and just, you know, hunkering down and really like doing an inventory, starting with that, saying what's, what's available. And then just synergistically, SMART getting the, or finally getting the handover from NCRA and having, you know, possession of the, the property at the depot, which is, you know, all of the planets just sort of aligned for this to happen. And it's just, it's just, I think it's so funny that this property was just kind of sitting right under our nose, but until SMART took possession from NCRA, there wasn't a party that had the authority to lease us this, this, this property. So it really was, you know, a combination of, of really good staff work on Kevin and Raphael's part, and then, you know, just having the opportunity come up with, with SMART, you know, finally being able to control the property, and then having good relationships with our Sonoma County facilities folks and SMART, and being able to say, hey, you know, we've got a real community need, you want to, you know, partner with us on this. So I just want to commend Hector as well and his team for putting it together, just kind of a great little blueprint for us to move forward. And I'm sure that there are going to be, you know, a couple of adjustments, couple of fixes we'll, we'll learn from, you know, Hillsburg, we'll learn from other cities with dog parks, and, you know, hopefully we'll come up with something that, that the public will really enjoy. I mean, as somebody who's, you know, kind of a, a neighbor to, you know, this, this property, the more I, community eyes on that corridor, I think the, the better. And I'm just really, you know, pleased that SMART has, you know, chosen to partner with us to, to meet this need. So I'm, I'm happy to support this and looking forward to moving forward on, on this project.
At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public comment. Make a public comment.
My name is Paul Lasker. I'm a resident here for about six years of Cloverdale. And I want to thank you for having a little booth at the fair, because when I went to the fair, they told, somebody told me that, oh, we're going to have something about the dog park. And we've been here, like I say, six years, and five days a week, we drive down to Hillsburg, and we go to the dog park down there. And so it's like a community thing down there. And it's a nice park, and if we could have one here, it'd be great. We, there are people from, I've met people from all over, from Canada to Mexico, that stop off at the dog park in Hillsburg. They stop and have lunch and those kind of things. But I wanted to, I have several things listed, it's not necessarily in order, and, like we say, we go there four or five days. The Hillsburg one is an excellent park. They are, you were talking about bathrooms and porta-potties. Well, down in Hillsburg, they're changing from porta-potties to a restroom. The other thing is I wanted to make, tell you about, is that it has to be large enough to accommodate several dogs, because the ones that are a little bit more vicious or get in trouble, they can separate them out. So it has to be big enough, not any smaller than the one in Hillsburg. And the lighting sounds great. I've met people from, from all over there, and I feel like having one here in Cloverdale would be, would be excellent for the community. I know that we would support it. I know that we would support it, and, uh, I know that several of our neighbors would. And anyhow, that's, uh, that's all I have to say for now. I'd like to be able to speak with the planners at some stage just to give my more detailed input as to some of the, uh, pros and cons of dog parks. Because we visit them, um, throughout California on different occasions. And there are some positive things and negative things about, uh, dog parks that we've had experienced. And I'd like to be able to give my input to whoever's doing the planning. So thank you very much, uh, for, uh, bringing this dog park to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I walk her again. Something just occurred to me about access to the dog park. If it goes on the far side of the freeway from downtown, that ov- that Citrus Park, the Citrus Fair overpass is gonna have to be adapted to make it more, uh, pedestrian friendly. Because people will be walking across it with their dogs. And, um, it, it seems a little tight just from my first impression. So I just wanted to put that out, that that's another aspect we're gonna have to consider when this thing goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No one else in the audience? Is there anyone in the virtual? Any hands up? Whenever you get a chance, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. No one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay, seeing none. Oh, one more? You, would you like to speak, ma'am? I'm gonna have to ask.
If you can do it with a microphone.
You take, you take your time. You've earned it. Oh, my gosh. Thank you for being here.
The dog park in, the dog park in, uh, Hillsburg, at, i- it's fairly large, but it has at mo- at the most maybe seven or eight dogs at any given time. And I think our population up here would even have less than that. So I, and they have just, um, a drinking facility for the dogs. Uh, they, they also have just a, um, a wooden, uh, what, outhouse for the, for the humans. And so it doesn't have to be real fancy. And that gets lots of use, and, and it's kept very clean. People, the people that go to it clean it up afterwards. It's kept spotless. So it, it's not, I, I don't think it's a big care thing, so.
Thank you. Ma'am, what was your name?
Excuse me, my name is Bonnie Vernelson.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this point, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further comments or questions? I think Melanie nailed it when she said it was a team effort. I know everyone has put in their, uh, hard work. Had their ear bent for years discussing this from the public. And I'm so excited that it's coming, going through and going to come to fruition. And I expect to see 500 people here carrying us this out on their shoulders when this goes through. So thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to seeing it come back. Does this take a vote on anything? Let me see where we're at. I'm sorry.
Yes.
It is a resolution. Okay. So let's, uh,
If you'd like to consider the security cameras, we'd like to amend the resolution to, uh, increase the amount of the budget amendment by 10,000 to bring it to.
And your resolution doesn't have the benches, shade structure?
Right, those were optional things. So we're gonna, unless you would like to entertain those now, we can conclude those, or, um,
So let's, let's discuss that right now. Anyone, you wanna go first?
I definitely think we should include that. We need shade in this, in the summertime.
Yeah, and I, I agree. If I just jump in, um, I think that even if we, oh, I, I'd rather us go under than over and, you know, just have an honest discussion. Realistically, yeah, we need shade, we need the trees, and we, we need a structure. So I guess I'd, I'd rather come in under than over on something like this and have a, you know, and if we, then if we have to take things away initially, or, um, if we can also, I, I think I'd like to include them initially so that the public can be aware and our service clubs could be aware of what the needs are and items that they could possibly sponsor. So I, 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 at the risk of throwing in the kitchen sink, I think we should, you know, see all, all of the goodies so that we can go out to the community and, and ask for help.
Right, the new amount is, it'll, in the resume will be 2, 230, 634. So right now, the resume is 199, 433. With the additional items, we'll amend the resume to 230, 634.
How would we say, uh, say, we round it up to, uh, 237?
Call it 237?
Two, uh, 231, if you wanna round it up.
Oh, I, I had 236, 34. So would it be?
It was, uh, excuse me, it was 236, 34.
Right, so wouldn't that be, if we kind of?
26,000, so it'd be 36,000.
Okay.
Plus 199, 433. Is that correct? Is the resolution wrong?
I was running out to the thousand.
The, uh, method for determining the updated cost estimate was to add the subtotal of 166, 195, uh, plus the additional 26,000, uh, and then, uh, add a 20% contingency on, uh,
Okay, so you did, I got you. You forgot the security.
And then, that's right. And that's, that didn't include the 15,000 or 10,000 for, for the security cameras.
So what's that total?
Hold on, give me one second. 283,000.
283. Okay.
Does that sound right?
Oh, that sounds right.
I've come up with 242, so maybe we rounded up to.
Did you do your 20% contingency?
Yeah.
You know what? I did 20% on top of the 199. That's where I screwed up. Yep.
If council supports maybe round number 2, 245, establishing a budget of, uh, 245. Do wanna be mindful that, uh, we are recommending use of Parker Rec impact fees. Uh, we, we have sufficient funds to fund the project at, at the 245 level, but it will reduce that, uh, that, that fund balance.
And Mayor, if I can, just to make sure, um, with the city manager or, uh, city attorney, we, if we have that budget number of 245 and we wanna offer opportunities for, um, commemorative benches or for service clubs, how will that impact, um, what we're doing?
The action tonight would be to amend the, the actual fiscal year budget. So anything else that comes in, or let's say donations, or whatever it was, uh, you may need to, you may have, you may not use all that amount, right? But you do still need to amend your budget in order to reflect the entire amount. But you can still accept donations, you can still accept commemorative benches or whatever. There'll, there'll still be decisions there in the future and opportunity.
Oh, it was, and, and how difficult would it, I know that, you know, Hector probably has some ideas of what he'd like to see or kind of, you know, some favorite, um, furnishings. Would it be possible to kind of, um, offer, um, I kind of, when, when we're developing the plan with the consultants, is kind of, you know, offered like this is the, this is the look and feel we're going for, these are the benches that would be available, or this is the, the, the pricing? How, how would that work down the line?
Hi, hi, Councilmember Bagby. So yeah, so we normally work with Dumont benches. Uh, we're very durable. Um, they go, they rate, uh, vary in price range from, you know, a thousand dollars to $3,000. So we would just have to, uh, come up with just, and, uh, a line item to just probably give the, the community, uh, three or four benches or picnic tables to choose from. So we can keep the same continuity, continuity. Uh, so yeah, just given maybe, I think right now we have three or four options that we've been working with. We actually have kind of a, a, a small program there for Porterfield Creek Preserve, where, which residents of, uh, Cloverdale residents have donated a couple of benches, uh, and, as well as, I think it's Vintage Meadows Park, so.
Yeah, and I know that the River Park, the River Walkers have, have installed one. So, okay, that, that just, I would just wanted to be clear that, um, yeah, I, I, I definitely would support going forward with that, like, that 245 number of city manager, things that's adequate, uh, with an eye toward having opportunities for, um, members of the public, uh, dog lovers who wanna create a, you know, commander, commemorative space for their pets or their loved ones, things like that. And that, that kind of just, you know, that we have an eye toward that as we move forward with the, the project.
A motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's a resolution.
Uh-oh.
It's a long one.
Okay, let's see. Oh, who's reading it? Was, who won? Was that Gus or me?
For you, if you would like.
Uh, yeah, and can you, um, and you can, do we need to pop in the dollar amount?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm only seeing the 25 grand. I'm not seeing that total. That's why.
The resolution a little bit.
Okay, yeah.
Is that okay?
That sounds great.
When I get there, if I screw it up, let me know. Okay, resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale authorizing the initiation of the construction of a dog park on a property owned by the Sm- Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit, SMART, located at 501 South Asti Road, APN 116-260-047. Approving an amendment to the capital improvement program to include a revised dog park CIP project worksheet and cost estimate. Approving a budget amendment to fiscal year 2223 budget in the amount not to exceed 245,000. Authorizing the city manager to enter into license agreement with SMART in a form approved by the city attorney and approve a professional service agreement with Mo Engineering for design work. Because the 25,000 for that was included in the one, in the talk, so I don't need to finish that. So the last part of the sentence is removed from the resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, that was Melanie on the first, Gus on the second. Perfect. Do we have, or can we get a roll call, please? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Excited. H3, update on remote participation in public meetings. Is it you or is it Jose?
Turn to Silver Two. City Attorney.
It, I'll be presenting, Mayor, and I know that, uh, our city clerk will also be jumping in. I know we have a PowerPoint. You could bring that up, Mike. That would be great. The problem, you give the microphone to the attorney at the end, so.
By the hour, here it goes.
Taking time with a PowerPoint. So Council, the, what we wanted to bring before you was the update or just kind of a briefing regarding Assembly Bill 2449. And that is our new teleconferencing rules for open meetings. I know I've sent the council a memo regarding this, um, I think, a while back, just kind of getting ready for kind of, you know, life after the emergency, right, or after the COVID local emergency. The council knows on the consent calendar, we did end the local emergency today. And that was because the governor also decided to end the state, uh, the state emergency for COVID. So with that, then we didn't have the findings. And that's going on at the county and other jurisdictions are all ending their, their local, uh, emergencies for COVID. Well, AB 361, uh, Assembly Bill 361, which allowed the council members to be able to participate remotely through Zoom without posting where they were calling in from, that was, uh, that was adopted and signed by the governor due to the COVID emergency. And remember, there were the restrictions about social distancing. Sometimes we couldn't even have meetings. But business needed to keep going, so that was the attempt and to make sure that business kept going. Well, that required a state of emergency or an emergency that was happening in order to make the findings. We've seen the 30-day resolution, right? Every, kind of every 30 days, making findings to continue the, the emergency. Well, uh, we're gonna start the presentation by talking about kind of the traditional teleconferencing for, uh, that council members have an option to how to participate remotely. The reason we start here is because, and this is, this is for, for newer council members that weren't council members prior to COVID, prior to the AB 361. You know, this is kind of the, the Zoom world is what they've known. But these rules, the traditional rules, and we'll call them traditional rules, uh, for participating remotely still exist. And they never, they were never changed. It's just Assembly Bill 361 allowed for an option to participate remotely. But traditionally, um, council members and other members of, of boards, if they wanted to participate remotely, they would have to, uh, actually post the agenda, just like we post here at City Hall and we post online. Well, they would post that agenda where they were going to participate from. So for example, if they were on, on vacation, participating, um, they wanna participate, they would normally participate potentially from a hotel they were staying at. They would, they would, and, and our, you know, the city clerk's office can also help. But arrange with the hotel in order for the hotel to post the agenda where that meeting would be. It's pretty much telling folks, like, let's say you're on vacation in, should go to Hawaii, and you wanna participate and you're at a hotel, and they post the room, let's say the lobby or the computer room or a conference room. Well, if somebody's there in Hawaii and kind of sees that posting and says, you know what? I wanna go and participate. I wanna see what Cloverdale is, is up to. They can. And members would be participating. Usually it was just by, by, on, on their phones, on speaker phone or on a, another phone, just on speaker. And when it got to public comment, we would also check, is there any member, are there any members of the public there at that remote location? The address where they were participating from was also located on the agenda. Now, we haven't seen that for a couple of years now with AB 361. But the reason I bring that up is because that rule, that, that, that ability to do that, oh, has always existed as far as even through the AB 361, and now it will be an option. When we talk about the Assembly Bill 2449, remember, it's kind of, it's another option in order to not do the traditional way of, of posting. But it's very limited, but it just gives you another option on how to participate. And of course, as, as I was talking to the city manager and kind of how we were gonna discuss the options, there is also always the option of if a council member is ill on vacation or whatnot, folks miss meetings as well. So just wanna bring that up. Next, next slide, please. And this just gives you, we talked about it in March 2020. That is when the, uh, local, the state emergency, national emergency, and our local emergency happened due to COVID. The gov- that, that had the governor, uh, do, uh, adopt, actually proclaim, have a lot of emergency orders actually signed in order to allow for remote meetings. That led to Assembly Bill 361 and now AB 2449. Next slide, please. So what is the Assembly Bill? What does it actually do? And we'll have a, a side-by-side comparison of the options. But what it states really, it provides another option, remember, another option where you don't have to post, a limited option, but it authorizes members, and it has to be less than a quorum of the body of the council, to participate remotely under two different reasons. What it calls just cause and what it, and also what it calls emergency circumstances. The quorum, meaning three of our council members, still need to participate in person from a single location within the city, and that's usually our chambers here, um, how we participate. So it's not, it's not like the, the traditional rules, as long as you have the majority participating within the city. It doesn't say they have to be within the same place. That would be fine for 2449. You do have to have in-person three members, um, and that would, that would be here most likely for our regular meetings. The, the thing that it points out as well is you can't just participate by phone. Any, if a member chooses to participate using Assembly Bill 2449, they must participate both audio and visual. So they have to have a camera. That's easy for us. so they have to have a camera, that's easy for us, we see Councilmember Bagby, uh, tonight, have it on, there's a camera on Zoom, that's what we use, so that should be, that shouldn't be an issue. In the event of disruption, so here's one of the big, the big issues right now with Assembly Bill 361, if we're having this meeting and Zoom goes down, we have to wait, we have to pause the meeting until Zoom comes back up to resume, and if Zoom is out, and we can't get it to come up, the meeting's really canceled, you can't move forward, because you've allowed the public to participate and the expectations there, and 361 prohibits you from, from, from continuing the meeting. 2449 does the same thing, if a member of the council is participating remotely under that Assembly Bill for just cause and emergency cir, or emergency circumstances, and we'll go in detail, they, uh, and, and Zoom goes down, we would have to wait, stop the meeting, just like we do now. I mentioned that it's limited, well, there are limited, it's limited to, to how many times you can use it. You can't always have an emergency, it can't always be just cause. Um, the legislation actually has, states that you can't use it for, for more than three consecutive months. You can't, you can also not use it for, uh, more than 20% of regular meetings with a cal, within a calendar year. What that means is for the, the most of, of, of councils that meet twice a month, with some, with some meetings canceled, you're really looking about four times, and there's also, there are also limitations, the just cause exemption, you can only use it twice. So really, if you use your two just cause, then that leaves you two emergencies. But when we go to the next slide, Mike, to kind of just break down a little of what this just cause and emergency circumstance mean. Legislation has states that, you know, you're gonna miss a meeting, you're not going to, you don't want to post, or you're seeing what options you have, well, here are your options under 2449. One of them called just cause, which is limited, like I mentioned, it's two meetings per year, and the reasons for this are limited, it's childcare or caregiving need, a contagious illness, a physical or mental disability need, or you're traveling on official city business. For example, if you're headed to a conference, as a council member, you're headed to a conference, you want to participate, well, you're able to, twice a year, be able to use this just cause, uh, exception to the posting of where you're calling from. One of the, again, we, you have to, uh, participate by video and by audio, and you also have to disclose if there are any other individuals 18 years of age or older in the room with you and what your relationship is with them. And, and I could see that now because we, in many jurisdictions, council members are on, they're participating, and you hear people in the background. Sometimes folks wonder, I wonder who's there, right, if they're under 361, you don't post, it's not open to the public, really. Um, the legislation, really, that was something they put in there just to make sure that everybody knows who's in the room with you. For emergency circumstances, which is the other way of using the AB 2449, it really just states a physical or family medical emergency, that's what's stated as, as the definition. But one of the differences between emergency circumstance and just cause is that for just cause, you don't need the council to give you permission, you don't need approval by the body. For an emergency circumstance, you do. It has to be placed on the agenda, and it would be early on, right at the beginning, to authorize that council member that wants to use it for emergency circumstances, authorize that council member to participate. It's kind of like in many jurisdictions, you'll have an absence and there'll be a motion to excuse the absence. That would be done, and if it's not on time to make the agenda for the action, legislation actually states that you could add it as an item too late for the agenda, so it could add it, you could add that item, uh, to, to provide that approval. It also, uh, it's, it's, also requires the same rules as far as participate by video, uh, and audio, and you have to provide that public disclosure if any other individual 18 years of age or older are present in the room, and just a general description. What I will tell you is, it's gonna be interesting how this plays out, because it says the definition, a physical or family medical emergency, but it also states, you don't have to give details because there's privacy interests. You don't have to go into details regarding your medical condition or your family's medical condition. So there's gonna be really kind of a vague statement of, I can't participate because I have a, uh, a physical medical emergency. We're all kind of wondering and how much detail that's gonna go, because again, you have privacy rights as well, uh, on disclosed, disclosing kind of any type of medical information. Yes?
It's on the first part of the agenda, what if it's denied by the quorum?
If it is denied by the, by the, by the council, then that, that council member cannot participate. If it is under the, uh, emergency circumstances. Again, just cause, you don't need permission, but you do for the emergency circumstance. And, and, and you bring up a great point, Mayor, where some jurisdictions are, we're even looking at it as far as do we even entertain Assembly Bill 2449, or are we not even gonna do that at all? A lot of those jurisdictions, we're really looking at it as, look, we don't want to have Zoom, or we don't have Zoom. We've been participating simply by phone, or people dialing in. There's still some jurisdictions that were just doing that, that never, uh, had the capability of Zoom and never installed the cameras or anything like that. So for those jurisdictions, it wouldn't even, even be possible unless they kind of just, you know, kind of rigged kind of an iPad with a person participating by, by video and, um, and audio, and you also have to make sure if you open it up to the public, because the public has to participate remotely as well, that they could participate by, by, by phone or by voice, and also you have to be streaming the meeting, they have to be watching the meeting as well.
Jose, do you want to entertain a couple of questions at this point?
Absolutely.
It's not very clear on anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the, uh, emergency circumstances, is that also limited to the number of meetings?
Yes.
So I can only have so many medical emergencies?
It's, it's the total of, under, under Assembly Bill 2449, really for the council, um, it's really limited to, and I think it ends up being 20%, which is about four meetings.
And, and?
That's the com, combination.
Of all meetings, okay.
Of, of, of the, under Assembly Bill 2449, whether it's just cause or emergency circumstance.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby, I can't see you, if there, you have any questions, speak up.
Oh, um, well, I'm, I can wait for public comment, um, yeah.
Thank you, Jose.
And many of you probably have heard this presentation in your other boards, uh, quite a bit already, and it's, it's definitely come up. And, and one of the things, um, and maybe we could go to the next slide by just kind of moving forward, but I will also remind you that this also applies to your other boards that you serve on, but also to these subcommittees. Now, in conversations with the city manager and I think with the council as well, I think it's been decided as far as, you know, Zoom has been great, it's a great, uh, addition for pu, public participation. It does allow on some issues for the public to be able to participate. I think that the idea was to keep Zoom going, um, and to still put it on the agenda as an option for the public to be able to participate. We'll be working on some language in order to make sure that folks know that it's kind of a, it's just there as a courtesy, but if it goes down, you're always welcome to be here in person. Because if it goes down, we may still continue the meeting unless somebody's participating under the Assembly Bill 2449. Uh, going forward, you're, we're no longer going to need to be making those AB 361 findings that happen every month. Zoom option is basically just a courtesy to the public for regular meetings and subcommittee meetings. You'll still also be able to use Zoom for potential consultants or people presenting, which that kind of made, made it very convenient as well. The, the disruption, we've talked about it, if, if nobody's using 2449, the council will have the option to continue with the meeting, you don't have to stop. And then, of course, we'll also, any, you know, continue with reasonable requests for accommodations consistent with the American with Disabilities Act of 1990 will continue to be met. My biggest advice to the council is, if you know you're gonna be absent, call me. Call, call Mike, call me, and we will walk you through your options. Is this something that qualifies under the Assembly Bill, or is it not? And how do you post traditionally, or if you have both options, do you really want to use, maybe you're, you're, you're on vacation, you're at a hotel, it's easy to post? Do you really want to use one of your four there, or would it be easier to post? Those are the conversations I would love to have, anytime you know you're, you're going, going to miss, I'll be providing you the options. Mike's always also available to help, and we'll walk you through it. I think it'll take a little bit of time, just like it took us a little bit of time with AB 361, this will be a little bit of a, of a, of a learning curve, too.
Thank you, I didn't realize we were so close to the end, I apologize for that.
No, no worries, no worries.
All right, well, let's ask questions, anything, any more?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so Jose, that last slide moving forward. Um, Zoom, uh, options will remain as a courtesy, so we can interact with the audience still?
Correct, so, so you would still take public comment like you do?
Yep.
It would be there, yes.
Okay, and, uh, but if the system goes down, we don't have to stop the meeting?
That is, that is correct, unless there's a council member that's participating remotely under the Assembly Bill.
Okay, well, that's pretty good. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, just kind of a follow-up to that, so, is, this is kind of a finer point, under the, the, the bill we're discussing, if Zoom goes down, Jose, does the council member still have an option to call in? And continue the meeting? Okay, so that's, that, that's, that's the bummer, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you're, if you're participating, if you're participating remotely under the Assembly Bill and Zoom goes down, and the key really is Zoom goes down and the public cannot participate anymore remotely, because if Zoom goes down, if you're using Assembly Bill 2449, then you also have to provide the public the ability to participate, just like we do these meetings with 361.
Right, thank you.
Let's see, clarification on the, on the question, so, um, if a council member was attending a council meeting remotely via traditional Brown Act rules, so we posted the location in the agenda and Zoom went down, under that scenario, you could continue, or you could not continue?
Yeah, yes, so under the scenario you presented, um, or right now, yes, so if you, if, if you're, if you posted, well, if you've posted and you jump on, on Zoom, because you've posted where you're gonna be calling in from, well, you've posted, you've done the posting, the public can be there at that location, Zoom goes down, and you decide you're, you want to just call in. Yes, the traditional rules don't require you to be on Zoom and on audio. It only, it only, it only, it only requires you to be able to participate and have the public there where you're located participate. Usually we would, we would do that, or traditionally, we did that on a speakerphone. So if Zoom went down and that council member could reenact, or could, could reestablish, sorry, the connection, even if it's by like, uh, speakerphone, as long as the folks there, if there are any, uh, where it's posted, are able to participate, you're fine.
Yeah, I think that's really important for council's consideration. If, you know, in some instances, you know, you may have, uh, a planned visit to, let's say, your, your, your children in college, uh, or a planned vacation, and you know you're gonna be, uh, out of the area, but you want to attend the council meeting, we can, you know, that's where it's, be really critical to coordinate with our city clerk on identifying the location prior to posting the agenda, so that that can be a designated space, or that, that location can be specified in the agenda, and then we don't have to use one of those exceptions, that, those will always be there, assuming council supports AB 2449. Uh, but in that, in that instance, you may want to, is, you know, specify the location, and then you, we don't have to worry about using one of the exceptions.
Well, and, and I'm sorry to jump in, but u, under that exception, on you're on vacation, you're visiting children, I don't know if you're going to be able to make the just cause or emergency circumstances, um, because you still have to, i, it's just not for anything. It has to still meet a limited to childcare or caregiving needs, contagious illness, physical or mental disability need, traveling, uh, on, on official city business for the just cause, or for the emergency circumstances of, of physical or family medical emergency. So just, just wanted to add there, don't want to encourage folks to go on vacation and use 2449.
Right, and I'm just saying, they, they could post, if they know they're gonna be on vacation.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I do. Um, Jose, currently I'm the alternate to Councilmember Bagby on the, um, Sonoma Clean Power, and I go as a, um, uh, I was on Zoom, but I wasn't allowed to speak. So am, am I then just a member of the public, uh, not in, in official capacity, if she's there at the meeting?
So, so we will still, and, and this will be interesting because still the same rules apply where you're, you're, what, and, and I'll, I'll work with you on that, because the rules don't change as far as kind of participation. It happens with like the committee meetings, for example, even in the committee meetings now, where a council member shows up, even if they jump on Zoom, it's the same rule, if you joined a current sub, uh, current committee that you're not on, you still couldn't, you still wouldn't be able to participate, even as a member of the public, because you're not on that committee.
But I'm, I'm an alternate, I'm, I'm, I'm not voting, uh, Councilmember Bagby sits there and, and.
Correct, and that's a different, that's a different entity, and there, if you're not there as a member, you're not part of the quorum. Happy to review what the rules that they establish are.
Okay.
But you would be a member of the public.
Because it's a, it's a long ride down there, and gas is now $5 a gallon, and, um, so.
Councilmember Bagby, I see your hand again?
Yeah, that's kind of a good example of, of, kind of, you know, the advantages of utilizing technology. Um, you know, fir, first of all, I, you know, I think it's pretty universally recognized at, uh, my boards, uh, especially the really far-flung ones, is that, um, uh, folks really appreciate being able to participate electronically. Um, whether it's driving distances, or, I know, the time of night that they don't want to drive. You know, this is the, the 21st century, this 2023, technology's not gonna go away, but I, I think that, you know, with, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jose, but it seems like, uh, the, the, the legislation is a little experimental, and we're probably likely to see some, some changes going forward, because it actually made some, um, the, i, it's actually more stringent than pre, than, than, um, previous versions of, um, the, the meeting rules, and I think some things are definitely gonna come out in, in the wash. Um, but I, I think it's important that we, we move forward with this so that, um, you know, we're continuing to be on the leading edge, um, and, you know, using 21st century technology to make, you know, our, our, our policy decisions. Um, so, yeah, I would just, I, I certainly would, you know, support moving forward under these rules with the tacit understanding that they're, they're likely, hopefully they will be adaptable and changing, because, um, you know, the legislators aren't subject to these rules. Um, they're making their, you know, former city council colleagues, and former, you know, county supervisor colleagues, um, subject to, you know, even more stringent rules, and I, I think one of the things that's come up in discussions at Policy um, committee that I'm on at the, at the league is that, well, you know, during the pandemic, we, you know, some people, some bad apples, you know, abused the meeting rules, and, and, you know, how are we going to crack down on that as council members? But the answer is that we don't crack down on each other as council members, the voters do. And if the voters see an abuse, um, they're gonna take action, hopefully. So, um, I'm hoping that we can, you know, move forward, um, responsibly, but also in the context of best business practices, best public policy practices, best work practices. And, you know, it's, it's, it's my hope that, um, these rules will be revised so that, um, you know, when you have a, a body that spans from Humboldt County to Mendocino County, there is some flexibility for, um, holding virtual meetings. Um, because, yeah, again, you know, here we are with Sonoma, an organization like Sonoma Clean Power, and we're telling everybody that they have to get in their cars and go to Santa Rosa, there's a, a definite hypocrisy there that I'm opposed to. So, um, you know, I think that this is a, a necessary interim step, and I'm hoping to see this legislation revised a little bit more so that it is, um, um, not, not quite so difficult to, for everybody to implement.
So, just one quick question, because it's not clear anywhere. I want to do it the traditional way. And I am going to do it from my house. How, how late can my address be posted on that agenda? Like, can it be in the last 24 hours like you would for an emergency, or does it have to meet the seven-day period, things like that?
Well, one, one, one issue with, and, and not many folks were participating from their home, because it also, remember, it has to be open and accessible to the public.
I was just using that as an example.
But, but let's say, but addresses period.
Right.
They would be actually posted when the agenda's posted, so if it's 72 hours.
Like, if it's updated, what if it's, what if it's not on there until the final update, like, what is the last chance? Like, what is the last chance? Because, I'm just saying, like, what if I had to go somewhere at the last minute, didn't want to use one of my four wild cards?
Right, right.
And wanted to post?
The problem is, you have to post, it has to be posted at the place you're going to be participating for the same period of time that our agenda is required to be posted. A regular meeting, 72 hours, a special meeting, 24 hours, and your address would also be located, the address you're participating from, on that agenda when it's posted here as well.
Okay.
On the original agenda, again, 72 hours for special meeting, I mean, for regular meetings, and 24 for special.
Sir, appreciate that.
Definitely really not user-friendly, that's for sure.
I got a quick question, Jose, on that. So you say, everybody, say for instance, you're visiting family, so up at mother-in-law's house or something, there's a house full of people, it's your only option, do you have to report everybody that's 18, over 18 in that house?
If you were there and it qualified as far as a just cause, if you were there and there was, for example, a contagious illness or a childcare or caregiving need or one of those limitations, again, you have to fall under one of those. And let's say there were people in the room with you, not in the house, but in the room you're holding the, that you're participating in.
Not in the room, but just if I have a room separate to myself?
You're fine.
Then I'm fine, okay.
You're fine. It's really in the actual, in the room that you are participating in.
All right, let's open it up to the public. Walker, any questions?
Raising their hand online.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the dice.
Wow, I don't know how to take that.
So when you say direction, what do you need with direction?
I really, it's only if the council really had issues with it and saying, no, you know what, we don't even want to do this, we don't even want to do Zoom. But the reality is, the reason why we just brought it is informational because we have Zoom. The council has invested a lot in making sure we can do Zoom meetings, and right now we have the capability, unless the council said, no, we really have an issue with this. I think it was more informational as far as presenting another option for council.
Thank you, Jose. Very good presentation. Okay, Subcommittee Reports. Finance, Admin, and Police, nothing to report. The next meeting is March 6th. Next meeting is February 21st.
It takes me too long to switch to screens, go ahead. Yeah, go right, yeah, go right through these because, yeah, by the time I get out of Zoom and go into I legislate, you're three things ahead of me, so go ahead.
Sustainability is February 21st and March 8th. Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, we haven't met since the last meeting. Our next meeting is February 28th.
Thank you. City and School Subcommittee, yes, the 20th was canceled, and now the next meeting is April 17th. And Homelessness Community Advisory Group.
We had that on the 8th, and we sat down, and it was more of an introduction of the new members to the committee. Talked to the Chief of Police, Scott, went over a point in time with Margaret. I apologize for not getting her last name right, talked to her, psych, and also am corresponding with her to set up a visit down to the L&amp;M down in Hildsburg to check that out, and that's all.
Mr. Mayor, I just had one question. I had the opportunity to watch that meeting on YouTube, and I'm just curious, who was the fellow in the blue shirt that was sitting there?
That was the interim school superintendent.
Oh, okay.
So he's actively, Steve, he's actively searching for a permanent, but he's the fill-in right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Written reports from Councilmember Bagby and Morgan Stern are attached to the agenda. Next thing we have, a city manager report.
Fairly easy, Mayor. Members of council, no report.
City Attorney? Oh, wow. Any impacts on our water supply that we need to be discussed?
No impacts. We continue to see improvements in our water supply conditions, which is good news. I think we expect to get some additional precipitation over the coming days ahead, and it's going to be coupled with some very cold weather, so just everybody button up, and let's look to see if we have, we get any snow out of this event.
My phone has a freeze warning and a rain warning, both from the Weather Channel right now, so. All right, Council Direction on any future agenda items? See a lot of heads shaking no, so that's incredible. So we will adjourn this meeting at 8:30. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.